Mr. Tannelli is Sue's big name.
Right.
Mr. Sockle?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
You can go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
It's better or you can just guess what we're talking about. All right, the next item on the agenda is for those of you who have not been part of this process before. We have a section that's coming up right now that has to do with public comments not related to the agenda. Sometimes it's somebody who brings up something that we put on the agenda later, but this gives you an opportunity to talk through that. So then we'll have the approval minutes and then we'll have a public hearing on at least one item. And then there's some discussion will start. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section for items not on the agenda. So that's open for public comment. And we're waiting for the crowd to come up. And no crowd, so we're gonna close the public comment section. Uh, thank you for waiting. And then we're gonna go ahead with the approval of the minutes from July twenty seventh, which is our last meeting. And any other motions and/or any other revisions?
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead. You have a question?
Yeah, um, last time we discussed removal of trees at Seventy Stern Lane and there was a concern about a soil-borne, uh, hardenism. And, uh, I noticed in the minutes that it's referred to, um, as Tamara. A small town in Texas in the panhandle rather than the scientific genus Carmelaria, it says Camarilla. So, I'm sure it's a trick of Lisa's spell check and that that's, uh, potentially changed. But I just want to point out it should be a capital A and, uh, a title sign of the genus.
We won't rename it legally for tonight.
Other than that.
All right. So is there a motion? Is there a second minute?
It was for.
Has directly moved second. All of the favors say aye? Aye. Oppose, there's no need to oppose, so we're gonna carry on. All right, very good. The next thing will be public hearing and there's a, looks like a continuation of the item that was, uh, four A, uh, on Seventy Stern. Is that still true?
Yes, the applicants at Seventy Stern are not prepared with their additional materials directed at the last planning committee and are requesting a continuance until September twenty eighth.
Okay, that will take a motion to do that continuance. So we need a motion to continue that item to the twenty eighth, twenty eighth.
That will continue item four A to September twenty eighth.
Vote and, so all of the favors say aye? Aye. Aye. All of us, if there's nobody else to do anything else, so we'll, we'll approve. So then, now we're gonna, uh, be talking about item four B, which is heritage tree removal at two oh seven Stockbridge Avenue. Um, and the, the process we use on this is we'll hear from staff. And then we'll open up the public comment. We'll start with the applicant themselves and anyone else that wants to speak. And then we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion and action as appropriate. So with that, I'll turn over to staff for an overview.
Thank you Chair. Uh, so the request before you tonight is for the removal of five heritage trees, all eucalyptus trees, uh, located at two oh seven Stockbridge Avenue. Uh, three of the trees are located along the front, um, property line, uh, abutting Stockbridge Avenue. The remaining two are in the rear corner of the property. All are clustered together, so those two clustered next to each other and those three are fairly close in proximity as well. Uh, the request for the removal is not that the trees are either dead or dangerous, but are posing, um, some concern in terms of their lean and posing a risk to both the public right-of-way in which they are adjacent to as well as to the private property improvements and property itself. The town arborist has gone out and inspected all of the trees. Um, combined with the robust replanting plan that is proposed by the applicant, which includes ten native, uh, twenty-four inch box minimum-sized trees throughout the property in the general proximity of those trees that are proposed to be removed. Uh, the staff is recommending, um, in combination with the arborist's recommendation, to recommend approval of, uh, the removal of these trees. You'll find that each of your chairs, there was a letter of support that was submitted tonight, uh, by one of the neighboring properties at two thirteen Stockbridge Avenue, a support to remove those trees. Um, and as noted in the staff report, we did receive one item of correspondence also in support, which was an email from another neighboring property, uh, let's see, located at twelve hundred Stockbridge Avenue. And I, um, had received a voicemail from another neighboring property, not in the town of Atherton, but adjacent in City Redwood City, also stating their support for the removal of all five trees. Uh, with that, um, based on the conditions in the draft tree removal certificate, and as noted in the report, staff is recommending approval of all five trees combined with the specific replanting plan.
There's no threat of those trees falling on Redwood City, is there?
Uh, well, no. They are, they have some significant lean in terms of which way they fall, that I don't think I can answer.
I was talking about the, the letter from the presentation. All right. All right, uh, any other, any, uh, any questions, staff? All right, then I'll go ahead and open the public comment, uh, and we'll start with the applicant here.
So, uh, I'm John Hennessy, this is my wife Andrea. We're rebuilding on this property, uh, for the last fifteen years. We've lived in the president's house at Stanford, so, uh, but we bought the house twenty-five years ago. Uh, these eucalyptus have grown extremely large in time. The two in the corner were actually small volunteers twenty-five years ago that have grown to be large. The trees are sufficiently large that were they to fall in the direction of Redwood City, they would actually completely block Stockbridge and touch driveway and other structures and the houses in, in Redwood City. Um, uh, they're also, obviously, eucalyptus are a big nuisance. The, the people walking on Stockbridge are walking basically right into those trees. Um, so I think we'd much rather have native, uh, species growing there rather than have these, um, these non-native species, I think. And, uh, we appreciate the time that the arborist has taken coming out and looking at the trees. So I think that sums up what we have to say.
All right. Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak?
My name is Follette Fono, your close neighbor to Mr. and Mrs. Hennessy. And been at the property for thirty-eight years. And we've been hoping, trying for years, so we like to, we put our thoughts into writing. And I hope you will get, it's very dangerous. We have photographs. We old enough to seen a lot of disasters. We used to live in Colorado, we knew the wild west. And these trees are highly toxic and flammable. And we are worried, our neighbors are all in their late eighties and early nineties. So we are considering the escape from the cul-de-sac. My husband today measured how many steps it takes from, because we only have exit to the cul-de-sac. So our main concern is really safety. And we're speaking for ourselves, but also like to support Mr. and Mrs. Hennessy in their new endeavor building a home, retiring, joining the other scene. So, and we love this town. We know the people. We've been around for a long time. And we hope you will give it a consideration, a favorable. They will, the street will be beautiful and they will be planting so many good trees. And your code says for future of property owners, you're not recommending eucalyptus. They are future.
Yeah, good point. Good point. Any questions?
I think my husband would love to say something.
We have a question for you.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we have a question for you.
I'm sorry, I don't hear too well, so.
This is Fono, I, I want to ask.
I may have to come closer, I didn't bring my hearing yet.
What were the previous attempts made?
I'm sorry.
What were the previous attempts made and with whom or to whom to have the trees removed? I'm just wondering what the history is.
The history?
Of the tree removed.
Of the tree, of requesting that the trees be removed.
Well, we have a tree, when we bought it property in seventy-eight. And the first thing we did to cut it out, maybe it was illegal what we did. So the little tunnel. And what we did.
Statue of Liberty. There's no police here, it's interesting.
And what we did, we were still living in San Francisco. That was our primary home, so we bought this as a second home. And we cleared out the, the roots. It took a month for somebody by hand escalate, because we knew the history of, that it can come back. And we didn't use any pesticides because we against that. So, uh, it's experience made us, as much as we disliked our trees on our property. It was dirty, it was right in front of our bedroom. And we, we knew a little bit of the history in Australia and the problems. And we planted so many beautiful trees and they're looking really good. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right, you did well. All right, anyone else here to speak? All right, fair. All right.
It seems like we're all in agreement, but since I came, I think I would like to speak.
Part of the democracy.
Right, yeah. I live at thirteen sixteen Stockbridge on the Redwood City side. Um, I do not like those eucalyptus trees and I'm really happy to see that they will go. The things that have been stated already, and then also they're a fire hazard because of the oil in them. And I was, I was reading, I, on Wikipedia, if you can believe it. And they actually are used, um, to clear like swamps and stuff, because the roots go down and take the moisture out of the soil, which is not what we want. So I would like to see those go. And then there's some up farther on Stockbridge, maybe someday we could get rid of those too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just would like to say I live at five one five Rutherford and.
Why don't you come up here too?
Okay, sir.
You're on the, you're on the recording.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's just, this is.
Okay, so my name is Jana Sverdrup and I live just down the street of five one five. And I recognize you guys from walking your dog and I know you. And I grew, actually grew up on that street. My parents bought that house, we bought the house from my parents that we currently live in. So they bought it in seventy-four. So I grew up there, but I was here because I totally wholeheartedly agree with removing those trees. And I wanted to be here just to say, I, we had a tree fall on our house six months ago, so we have not even. I mean, it's been so awful, I can't even tell you the nightmare it's been. And we weren't home and it was a big cedar tree. And my neighbor had said that it was, you know, he had an arborist look at it and when it fell, it was rotten on the inside. And then about eight years ago, I heard this humongous heritage oak tree fall that crushed a car across the street from us and it could have killed someone. So, and my parents used to tell me, don't walk your, the baby under that tree, you know, because they're, they were afraid it's gonna fall. I'm like, you're crazy. I called San Mateo County, they wouldn't do anything. A beehive actually left the tree before it fell, like they knew that it was. And so I just feel like it's, I'm really glad to hear that people are agreeing to this, 'cause I feel like it's just, I'm tired of like people thinking that trees are more important than people. And, and after what we've been through in my family, like my kids lost all their toys 'cause of asbestos coming down. We lost all of our belongings, everything. So we're out of our house, it's, I mean, it's crazy. It's just an insurance nightmare, I mean, they're covering everything, but I just, I just wanted to give that point, that this is, you know, we could have been, someone could have been killed, I mean, with branches coming into my house, my kids. So I'm just glad, I really just hope that you guys take that seriously with all the trees in Atherton or even, we have huge redwoods behind our house and I don't even think there's anything we can do about it. But, you know, I just, I just really wanted to be here just to testify to that, 'cause it's, it's been horrible, so, thank you.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else here to speak on the item? Or an item flurry for those of you who just came in. All right, and I'll go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing and, uh, bring it back to the board for discussion and action as appropriate.
I went out to look at those trees. I thought I was tall. They are massive, they're monstrous, they are extremely intimidating. And if there's any reason we can say yes, I think we should say yes.
I agree, absolutely. I think everyone, there's a consensus here and that's wonderful, because it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, the right-of-way issue is, uh, is a, issue for me for sure, because I mean, you'll, uh, the one thing about when you take those trees down, you'll have to figure out some other thing to block your going into your driveway, because there's, there's, uh, those trees will stop anything in terms of running into them and they're dang, they're dangling out there close enough to roadway to be not a good thing. Um, and I, and they are, they are the type of tree that when they fall, they crash hard. So, uh, I, I think, and particularly with the plan that, that we have in terms of replacing trees, I think it's a, it's warranted. So, uh, uh, I, I don't see any issue with this one. You're not a little tall tree, are you? That's a long tree. All right, so, uh, all right, so I need a motion in a second. There's a item I can read. All right, can you wait a minute? I move that planning commission plan to impose a removal of five heritage trees at two oh seven, uh, the Stockbridge Avenue in Atherton would be, uh, would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan. And for this reason, I've noted in the staff report and the condition approved the three, the tree removals with the conditions stated in the draft here, which tree removals are due.
Second.
Move consecutive? All, any discussion? All right, all of us that did or say aye? Aye. Come and oppose, so you're, you're past true. All right, just taking them down carefully.
Yeah, we will, we will.
Yeah, please.
All right, thank you all for coming. If you said yes. We're gonna continue on now? Next item, that's on the agenda, is, uh, whole business, especially the applicant, you know, the code sidewall and endwall regulation. All right. One of my hot, exciting topics. All right.
Thank you, Charlie. So back at your May planning committee meeting, you began some initial discussion on contemplating some potential revisions to the town's process of receiving special structures permit for, yes?
Yeah, real quick, I just wanna let people know through, because there are some, uh, commissioners that aren't here. We're not gonna go quite as deep in this topic this time, because we want everybody to be involved with it, but we wanna make sure that we got, got the discussion started. So for those of you, uh, in the room who came for this, I just wanna make sure you know that this is, this is the beginning of a process, not the end.
So just a brief overview of what happened back in May. You began the initial discussions, uh, on what the existing town regulations are as it relates to maximum sidewall and endwall heights for modern and contemporary style architecture. And some of the issues that our development community is coming back to the town, um, that they're facing with the regulations as it relates to this again, specific type of architecture. Uh, right now, any request to increase those maximum heights for a sidewall, uh, requires the issue of a special structure permit by the planning commission. So any type of modern home that wants to go taller than twenty-two feet and we're measuring that from the town's defined average natural grade and in a completely cluttered situation, it's gonna be to the top of that roof parapet, uh, will require them to come forward to your commission and the granting of that special structure permit. So commission directed staff to come back with some conceptual ideas and options if we were to consider potential revisions, either in process and or regulation, um, as pertains to sidewalls. So following that meeting, uh, staff did meet, uh, with a few local architectural firms. We outreach to all firms that were here at the last meeting, as well as some additional firms, just to try to get as much idea and feedback and really hope, uh, open that discussion up to see if we were to contemplate some changes, what makes sense. So in terms of, uh, that twenty-two foot height limitation, and when I say that twenty-two foot height limitation, I should back up and be specific that tho, that regulation pertains to those properties in our R one A, which is the zoning district, which is the majority of the town. Um, however, the smaller subset of our zoning residential district, our R one B, also has that same sidewall height limitation. It's just lesser at eighteen feet. So I'll probably use the twenty-two foot, uh, reference in the rest of my discussion, but if anything would pertain, carryover to that eighteen foot sidewall height limitation for properties, residences, I should say, in the R one B. Um, so with that, at twenty-two feet, uh, my discussions with, uh, one local firm is that at twenty-two feet, not only are you potentially compromising the overall architectural style of the building by, with lack of a better way, squishing it down, uh, you're really comp, you also could be compromising the internal ceiling heights, uh, that the floor plant would be able to result in. On page four of your staff report, very simplistic graphic that attempts to display that. So at twenty-two feet, um, from what we're being told, you need to have an average eighteen inch, uh, floor plate to allow proper drainage around the property. And just doing simplistic math and assuming you're having a two-story, uh, building with a second floor floor plate, also eighteen inches, you are left, uh, with nineteen feet of play, so to speak, to maintain that twenty-two foot, um, that twenty-two foot maximum sidewall height for your modern style home. Um, on that same page in the staff report, I just pulled a few architectural examples, some in Atherton, some outside, to show that this type of style can lead itself to variations in roof heights. You see sections of buildings that pop up above and beyond other sections. Um, and that type of design is, 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 is very limited, it's very difficult to accomplish with that twenty-two foot height. So that's just an overview of some of the design issues that we're being told, uh, the development communities may face with these types of regulations. So now getting into some points for discussion on potential alternatives. Um, taking a step back and looking at, at the big picture of, of what we're trying to accomplish and what we feel is important to also consider in looking at any potential revisions is what the big picture goal is for the town. Um, our current general plan has its first land use policy state that the town wants to preserve its quote scenic rural, thickly wooded residential area with abundant open space. So any changes that the town would consider making to any of its development regulations should consider the ability of that change to adequately meet that general plan goal. Um, the other thing I think that's important to keep in mind while we discuss some alternatives are any unintended consequences that could result in making a change to other types of architecture that the town seems to find itself leading into. We would call it more traditional type architecture, or really, uh, designs of homes with pitched roofs. Um, so with that being said, uh, I'll just go through the one, two, three, four, five broad concepts that we presented in the staff report in terms of potential, um, changes to consider, at least for discussion purposes. Uh, these changes were derived as a result from my direct meeting with two specific local architectural firms. Some email correspondence that we received from an additional firm that was included in your pocket. I think all these folks are here tonight too and probably would be able to speak to it, um, more intelligently and from the design perspective than I can. I'll give the b, uh, brief overview and, um, of course, open it up to any questions that the commissioner, the public house of staff. So the first item, um, going back to trying to be respective of any unintended design consequences that could result, um, from making any change, is to try and come up with a way to limit the, uh, boundaries of where those changes are going to be applicable. Uh, so one way of potentially really narrowing the focus of the discussion of change is to define the type of residential home design that any change would be applicable to. Um, one proposed means of doing such is by potentially creating a new definition in our zoning ordinance for, uh, what we'll call flat roof architecture, uh, not allowing it to be subjective, but being very specific as to what type of home design, whether you call it modern or contemporary or whatever the, the, uh, current flavor is of what that type of architecture may be called. Does that mean change is by defining a roof pitch? Um, so we went out and took a look at what perhaps some other jurisdictions do and come up with a couple, um, language suggestions, uh, that would define a flat roof. Uh, specifically those with a roof pitch of two percent or less. You may, we may have the discussion, maybe it's a lesser percentage, maybe it's slightly higher. That seems to sort of be the industry standard, at least from what I found in my research efforts, on what other jurisdictions may define as a flat roof type, um, home. Um, being specific on, well, what is flat? Does it have to be exactly flat? Can it have a parapet? Can it have some slope to it? I think it could, um, as long as that pitch is clearly defined. Um, there was also some suggestion on being very specific in the language on how you're going to measure a flat roof home, because our current building height measurement, um, was, is, is more geared towards, uh, a definition that alludes itself to a pitched roof type home. So we put those points in there, um, as creating the baseline of where these changes may derive from. So getting into some of the more specifics. Uh, as we mentioned, right now, the folks can request greater height, sidewall heights through issuance of a special structures permit. Excuse me. Right now, the way that the ordinance reads, that can only happen with lots in the R one A zone. For those lots in the R one B zone, um, their process would not be special structures, but would be various, different set of findings. If, if we still want to require some type of additional purview for requests that exceed whatever that new or whatever that height may be, we want to consider having that process be the same for both of the town's residential zoning districts. One way of considering a revision to that additional purview process, uh, would be for that special structure permit, uh, to change its criteria. Uh, right now, if an applicant requests that excess height above that twenty-two foot maximum, they need to increase the setbacks on all four sides of the building, a ratio of five feet for every one foot increase. Um, I, I know, I've spoken with many folks just over the counter who have interpreted that criteria to be, well, we've already inset our offending element, our area that's in excess of that maximum height line, would we need to increase the setbacks on all other sides that do not have that increased height? So that could be, uh, potential for consideration in changing the criteria to only having the area exceeding that twenty-two foot height maximum, uh, have that subsequent increased setback on the offending sides. The, another option to consider is to remove that special structures permit, uh, remove this additional tier of purview. If folks, if you wanna keep the same ratio regulation of a five-foot setback increase for every foot in, increase in vertical height, uh, on all four sides of the building, or just the offending element, if a plan set adequately demonstrates compliance with those regulations, then remove the special structures permit and have that done, um, administratively at the staff level. Um, another option would be to just require that special structures permit, um, for any increase above the maximum sidewall height without a setback increase, but have that special structures permit create itself more in a design review fashion. So you look at each case, um, individually or on a case-by-case basis. So the next conceptual option that we looked into, uh, was creating new standards, uh, that would change that twenty-two foot sidewall height regulation and or the eighteen foot sidewall height regulation for our lots in the Garwa, uh, in Garwa, uh, so. So a point that we wanted to make sure that was considered in any changes was the resulting design implications, uh, with respect to minimizing the homes apparent bulk or mass, potential for negative impacts to neighboring properties and or the public right-of-way with increased height, uh, just as it relates to the aesthetic itself, um, and or any light and privacy issues. Many times, as you can see in some of those architectural, um, examples that I hid in there, these modern contemporary style homes tend, can tend to have a lot of glass and a lot of windows. And I think that point was discussed at the May meeting as well. Uh, so all things we're trying to take into consideration when we pose these potential solutions or potential alternatives of these four considerations. So the first being is to just increase that sidewall height. So, the first being is to just increase that sidewall height to an acceptable number. The, let's see. We had put in a suggested range of anywhere from twenty-three to twenty-six-foot height. Twenty-three was an easy suggestion, as it's simply just one foot above the standard or existing regulation, to a max of twenty-six. Twenty-six was derived simply as the average between the maximum sidewall height and the maximum endwall height. There would still be that overlap of a sidewall and endwall. So really, when you say potentially changing the sidewall height to twenty-three to twenty-six feet for a modern-style home, really you're saying that's the maximum allowable height that that building could attain. Now, how this could be implemented could be through the creation of a daylight plane ordinance, Jaffetton currently does not have, many other jurisdictions do have. And what a daylight plane ordinance is, it's taking at, well, typically you see from the setback line of a building, you measure up to a certain height at that spot. You then have at a defined angle, typically you'll find forty-five degrees. I've seen it anywhere from twenty-five to fifty-five, I think, just off the top of my head. And within that specified area, you cannot exceed a certain height. Once you get past that point, you're allowed to increase the height to a defined maximum. So, that could be a way of implementing an increased height for these homes, but at the same time requiring that increased height to be stepped back, so to speak, from the wall line below. So, the graphic that, again, very simplistic in nature, on page six at the bottom of the staff report attempts to display the, what a daylight plane could accomplish if the commission were to consider the option of allowing for increased sidewall height in some capacity. There was some discussion at the last planning commission meeting on, well, if we're going to make changes, whatever those changes may be, how do we avoid the regulations allowing for a box-type structure? We want to see some kind of relief, whether it's in setback or height, just not one big rectangular-shaped building on the lot. So a daylight plane, again, could accomplish that. There could be other means. There was one suggestion that was made by one of the architects that staff outreach to, and he's here, and I think he has some slides, too, that he'll go over, to consider implementing regulations that would limit the ability for a sidewall to go higher than that twenty-two-foot by pulling in the town's current regulations as they relate to dormers. So, that would look like a certain percentage of a building's linear length can have these, we'll call them "pop-ups", not really a dormer, so to speak, for a modern-style home, but the concept of implementing what the town's already doing for dormers, since it's familiar with the staff and familiar with the design community, but rewriting it so that it would be applicable to these modern, flat-roofed-style homes. And you can create limitations on that. How much of it can go up? How tall can it go up? For example, the dormer, the height cap on a dormer is done through the regulation with spaced, it has to be two feet lower than the ridge line above. Obviously, that's not going to work for a contemporary-style home. The way that would need to be accomplished is, again, just by setting that potentially increased sidewall height, but limiting how much of a building facade or elevation can increase above that height that we'll be discussing. I had made mention on previously about how sometimes these types of architecture lends themselves to a lot of glass or windows. One way to potentially consider mitigating any impacts of these windows or glass is by limiting the height of windows on a second-story with a defined, flat-roof-type building. The town currently does that on accessory structures, for example. Limits the maximum window height to be no more than nine feet, I believe, to the top of the window. So, again, similar concept that's already being done in design, or development regulation, I should say, but carrying it over to consider, consideration of a potentially new regulation as it relates to these flat-roofed homes. The next item of conceptual discussion would be just to remove the sidewall height limitation in and of itself. Just have a maximum height, perhaps, for flat-roofed homes, and create a sliding scale so that the farther that building is setback from its minimum setback requirement, the taller it can get. An example that was posed was that for, say, every two feet that building is setback, you're allowed an additional vertical foot of height. And you would still want to consider setting a capped maximum to avoid, again, that box-type design. So, this conversation that we've been having as it relates to the single-family homes would also carry over to the accessory structures and buildings, because typically you're going to find that their garage, or their poolhouse, or their guesthouse, of course, wants to follow that same architectural nature of the main residence. And the issue is very similar in what they're facing. So, for accessory buildings backing up on those regulations, they have a maximum sidewall height of eleven feet, building height of fifteen. So for a flat-roofed building, you're capped at eleven feet. This is the same for both our R1A and our R1B, excuse me, zoning districts. So, some concern with that is, of course, again, just the design or aesthetic that would relate by just one flat box building. You're not going to find any architectural relief from setbacks on an accessory building, because they are limited to being one story in height. So, right now, you can, under standard regulation for an accessory building, have what we call "vertical architectural projections". Examples given are, yes, spires, towers, cupolas. They can exceed that eleven-foot height by two feet, so long as that, we'll call it, area of vertical fence is set back twenty feet, I believe, from the side and rear property line. Mostly, you're going to find these buildings tucked back in the corner. So, set that area of, that taller vertical area back farther from your neighboring property. So, options to consider for accessory buildings, similar in approach for the main house would be to simply increase that sidewall height more than eleven feet. A range of twelve to fourteen feet was given for just sake of discussion. Same approach was taken as to the range suggested for the main homes. You could also create sort of a tiered system that we discussed for the main residence, which would have any area of that accessory building that's greater than eleven feet just have to step, setback, excuse me, that much farther from their side and rear property line at some kind of sliding ratio, whether it's two feet, setback for every one-foot, five, perhaps more, because accessory buildings are only required to have a minimum setback of ten feet from the side and rear property line. So, you may want to consider a higher scale, so to speak, than that which may be considered for the main house. So, that concludes the conceptual approaches that we presented in tonight's report that, again, was taken from our conversations directly with some of the local firms that do a fair, a lot of work here locally in town, and also those that did speak to directly, but that provided their input via email. So, I know there are some folks here with some presentations that they'd like to make to the commission, but we're happy to answer any questions at this time, or open it up and continue the dialogue as the presentations are made.
Questions?
No, I'll continue to listen.
Yeah, one, I have one question about, so, I also don't want to incentivize one design over another. And so, right now, theoretically, the, on a, on a cable roof house, it would have a window height to, on one wall, at a maximum, that's higher than the other wall. You know, the pitch of the roof would keep the window height down. With the, with their change to the regulation that would not limit the number of window directions, it actually would incentivize a design that would have more, potentially more windows. So, it's just something to think about. You know, one of the things, it's a light thing, and virtually all of the examples we have have this nice full-deck idea that sits right out in front and, and, you know, that invariably will look at, and give view to a, to a backyard that we didn't have a backyard view of before, things like that. So, just some of the, some of the things I'm thinking about in terms of not in, in sort of normalizing the architectural landscape, not incentivizing one design over another. So, with that, I'll go ahead and open up the, if there's no other comments, questions.
No.
All right, all right, let's go ahead and open up the comment section, and we'll, we'll get, we'll get to see some slides, I assume. So, I think you can rush up to the front, whoever's, whoever's up first with the, with the screen that's already set up.
That's nice.
So, I am only here to, well, first let me start by saying I'm Steve Borlick.
That's a good start.
Younger Borlick Architects. And you're, you're facing an interesting challenge in the ordinance based on design. Stephanie reached out to me, and I've been sort of watching from the background. I don't have a project that's directly affected right now by this discussion, but I was thinking back on, this goes, twenty-five years ago, I remember still a conversation that I had with Don McPherson, who was the, who was the building official way back. And to put a context on whether Atherton wants to encourage one design over another, and to your point, he said, when we were talking about the landscape screening agreement, something to the effect of, "You can design anything you want to. We have big setbacks, we don't care what you do, but if we don't like it, we reserve the right to force you to plant trees around it, so we don't have to look at it."
That, that was the old days.
Right, right.
So, that would be very convenient.
But that, that gives you a sense of the, the development of the ordinance over time in, with respect to design. And I, I also just quickly, I'm going to let you pass this around, because it's just a little quick sketch I did while I was waiting here, but that'll show you the difference in a, in a traditional detail over a more contemporary Eve detail in terms of what it does to the exterior architecture based on an exact duplicated, exactly duplicated ceiling height. Okay? And it just, you know, it just supports this point that people have raised with you that they're limited in their ceilings with flat-roofed designs. And arguably, there's a flipside to that, that it presents differently from outside. So we're also, we're, you know, you want to be concerned with having sensible design and sensible architecture. And so, I've been thinking about this, and Stephanie and I had a conversation about this, but I've been thinking about this from the perspective of, what do you have in place now that, that you could easily switch to accommodate something in this direction? And so, now I'm going to prove my complete lack of, you know, minimize these, lack of ability to, to work with this. But, so this, this, this is basically your endwall sidewall shape. This is, this is what you get when you start working with a twenty-two-foot sidewall, thirty-foot endwall. And it can turn into, it can turn into a lot of different kinds of things. But, uh-oh. Trying.
Try, you're good.
I might have to, I might have to have some help here, Stephanie.
What else?
But, this is your, this is your current dormer zoning. And, let me see if I, I'm trying to sort of flip through, I did close it, but. Sure.
Is it PowerPoint?
No, it's just PDF files, they're, yeah. So, yeah, that's it. So, okay. Yeah, that's good. Let me go back to what we have. This right here is the only thing that limits you from considering a taller sidewall as a dormer is this two-foot-down-from-the-ridge limitation. So, in a lot of cases, that two feet ends up being two feet from the height limit. And so, you, you will end up with, um... You'll end up with, you know, you end up with things like this.
Yeah.
You know, you can have a, you might not go with such a, such a steep roof, even a shallower, traditional design, you can wrap at the twenty-two feet all the way around. And that detail that I showed you still allows for vaulted ceiling heights, et cetera, inside. So, when you begin to apply the dormer, you get up to fifty percent before it starts to be considered excessive. And this is a shed that, the example that you have in your, in your code book here, this very small dormer over here, that wall is actually flush with the exterior wall. It's not recessed at all. So in this example, your shed is recessed, in this example, the dormer is recessed. But this is allowed, in theory, with no, with no recess, as long as you're two feet down from the ridge. So, so back to this, that's also fine, okay? And, and within the dormer ordinance, you can have side-facing elements, whatever you want. And I apologize, this is very simple-minded way. But, you know, the idea for me was to study what can be done within your existing ordinance, and then look at, what is, what does that present to neighbors? What does it present to the community? What does it give you for interior volumes, and go from there? And so, one could overlay, and this was an interesting one, I don't even know what that is. Is that a dormer? It's still a sidewall? It's a, is it a roof balcony? Is it allowed? We talked about this a little bit, and I don't know. Okay, I haven't done that, but, but it doesn't seem to be entirely different than either, either one of these.
Yeah, it's an inn birdie.
Yeah. So, so then, then you look at a contemporary shape. You've basically got an endwall, a sidewall. Your sidewall is now taller than your endwall, but you've done all of that within the context of allowing your higher, the higher portion of your mass to relate as if it were a dormer. The only thing missing is the ridge above. So, if you, if you gave a dormer a height limit, then you could use your existing ordinance to allow portions of contemporary masses to be taller, and you wouldn't be stuck. So, you know, the other one is, you know, this recesses as well. That's, that goes along with the recessed dormer. So, there, you know, the discussion about, do you average sidewall and endwall? And do you take thirty and twenty-two and say twenty-six and provide that as a, as an alternative? Maybe enforcing everything else the same. That's, that's another, that's another potential approach I think people have raised. And...
So, let me, let me ask you a question. First of all, I appreciate the work you do on this, because it's very helpful. In this situation, that raised portion would not be a full floor. That would be the difference between a dormer and a non-dormer, right?
Not necessarily, because, you know, architecturally, from a design perspective, it could be anything. It could be, it could be a split-level second- It it could be it could be a split level second floor, it could be a a higher first floor, and there's a there's a lot of things that I I don't think that you necessarily imply that this becomes something inside. It it in in some cases, if you take the difference between the twenty-two foot and the thirty, you can get these loft spaces up, you've got enough space that you can get a loft, you can get you get high dormers, you can get a third floor almost.
Okay.
If you were pushing for it. This would, if one were to say a dormer limit should be twenty-eight, because it's two feet lower than the highest ridge could be, then this would create a twenty-eight foot height limit for fifty percent of your building and twenty-two everywhere else. But you could distribute that over whatever you wanted, as long as as viewed from the from any side.
Yeah.
It was fifty percent.
Got it, that makes sense.
And it hasn't i- i- it hasn't presented any more mass. In fact, you know, put a traditional roof on it, and it's it's buried within it.
That's good, thank you, very good job, very good job.
So that's uh.
Yeah.
That's what I have for you.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Alright. Uh Sean.
Does your presentation have music with it?
I didn't realize we were gonna do this, I sent some stuff in to to just use as um exhibits and.
Alright, that's fine, but we're we're not we're it's not a grading contest here.
Okay, great.
Just if we're just getting started on it, so.
We'll follow you through this.
Whatever you have will be helpful.
Okay, uh Sean Owen, um Owen Signature Homes, we are developing a property at sixty-one Faxon. And I guess you could call us uh somewhat investigators. The discussion's been going on before us, but.
Yes, that's just you're just the most recent.
Most recent, that is, yeah, let me finish, the discussion's been ongoing, but I guess we brought it to the forefront. Um so I just wanted to show you the project that we brought in the staff, which is this. And we had this item over here, which was non-compliant. And in order to make it compliant, we ended up with this. So it's a small thing in the scheme of things, but it's, you know, in our opinion, kind of bastardizing the.
You just pushed the wall out, or did you pull the, you pulled the top in?
We dropped it down and we created a eve, a false eve.
Okay.
Um so that twenty-two that created that twenty-two foot height there.
That'd be a natural spot for leaks to start, is that right?
It's, yeah, it's just not ideal, it's not um in keeping with the the design intent. So we went from that to that. Um so that was on the main house, and then you saw the uh outstructure. Did that get closed out, or where I found that?
I'm sorry, false.
The the outstructure, the guesthouse um version.
They on his version, they got confused.
There's a there's a to be the name of that.
It's in the question. So that, any of this.
Uh yeah, we want us to have say.
You have the original.
Yeah, the outstructure.
Okay, it's secondary.
Yeah, there you go, thank you. Yeah, so this this is, we talked about the secondary structures, or um staff talked about secondary, Stephanie talked about sec- secondary structures and the the height um, the vertical wall height issue, and we ran into that with the secondary structure as well. So um I thought I had the.
So that was the original request right there?
No.
This was the altered version, yeah.
Okay.
Um I thought I had.
Central original too.
On the second page, maybe?
Yeah, just the third page of that file.
Oh, it's in that file?
It's the third page of that file.
Oh, okay.
I'll put it past it.
There we go. Okay. There's only one. Oh, yeah. Anyway, when we ended up here, I think we're at eleven feet right now to the eve, and we draw, again, we created that false eve to meet that eleven foot sidewall elevation, so here's, oh. There we go. So here's what we started out with. Um so minor things and in the scheme of things, but.
Oh. The left-hand side aside there, is that what it is?
We ended up going from this.
Yeah.
To.
The right-hand side.
Oh, okay, there we go.
I was looking at the bottom of the file. It's in the other file. Yes, in the other file.
I don't know, well, you get the point.
We're taking the word for it.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, we we um we kind of brought this forefront and wanted to see, you know, it sounded like there was um many other issues that other um architects uh were dealing with, and so we thought, why not take an opportunity to kind of report it and see if we can do something, but work on it, make it better. So.
Yeah, so the bulk, the bulk is is kind of what we're struggling with, I think, a little bit on on some of these designs. Uh they're they're just extra bulky, you know, in terms of, so and since we uh we're not a design review board.
Right.
Uh uh some of the the way the way the community deals with it is by the definition of things, right? And if you get to paint whatever you want within the canvas we provide. But some of these uh some of these uh plans that we've seen recently have been bulkier and bulkier and square and square. They sort of look like Prince's continent, a prince's uh uh what do they call it, what do they call it? Compound, you know, just like, you know, it could easily be an industrial building someplace or or a commercial building. And so I think I what we're trying, I think what I'm trying to, I'll speak for myself, what I'm trying to do is allow for the architectural creativity without the um with without what it provides in terms of just bulk square footage, you know, ten thousand square foot basement with a ten thousand, two ten thousand square foot boxes on top of it. Um and um it it that's what we're trying, we're just trying to, we're trying to make sure we don't get into that, or at least I'm trying to make sure we don't get into that sort of cycle.
Mm-hmm.
Um so.
I think the way that's um the guidelines are written right now is um very conducive to traditional architecture, and I think there's some room to improve, you know, architecture like this, and that's a.
And I'm living in a in a peaky eiler, you know, so I I live I live in a in a in a in a um a modern house that was built in nineteen sixty, so 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 I'm appreciating the architectural concept, but I'm also struggling struggling with it um with the balance on it.
I think you got some great ideas from staff, and you know, I think there's, you know, a way to come up with a good solution.
Alright, yeah, and I really appreciate the 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 input too, that really is helping us a lot. Did you have something to?
If you wanna go.
You you can go first.
I just wanted to uh, I did propose that's part of the package, um a an alternate code rule as well. Um to introduce myself, I'm Jacqueline Bremeyer, I'm with Colesat and Associates Architecture. Um we are um not as familiar with Atherton Co., we haven't worked here as often. Um so some of the rules we came up against were brand new, and we were kind of coming from an outside opinion instead of being working in the town for many, many years, so we're just coming from a different perspective. Um that perspective being, we work with a lot of other jurisdictions that use the daylight plain rule that you mentioned, and that's also what I suggested in the rule. But what I wanted to s- to kind of bring up is that we don't want to necessarily make these rules so that the traditional home, you know, if they want thirty foot high on one side and then create a ridge and then do the traditional home, but we don't wanna hamper them from creating that same, what they've been doing for the last twenty, thirty years, you know. My suggestion in what I prepa- proposed is that maybe there is an alternate. If you want to do a modern design home, you can abide by this other set of rules, you can do this set or you can do this set. Um our biggest um heartburn, and it's probably one of the sketches that it provided, is that the fact that, of course, the the sidewall is measured to the bottom of eve. And so I think that is our biggest point, that um either there's an alternate set of rules for modern architecture or the existing rules um do don't define sidewall to bottom of eve anymore, or there's some kind of new language there. Um I also definitely agree and had already thought about the idea that um if you're gonna have a a maximum height all the way around and create a daylight plane, that maybe it is not like the dormers, if it's fifty percent of an elevation, that way you can um make sure that you're not um going the whole elevation all the way up. Well, the other point is that when you do, you do already have a code rule that states that a certain percentage of your, you know, your second floor can only be a certain percentage of your first, and I think that already creates that back and forth and up and down. It it already forces us to do that. It's it's a great en- enforcer of that, of what you're trying to achieve. And you you really can't create a two-story box all the way up, all the way around. You just, it's just not possible unless you really wanna shrink. It either way, I think it's, is it thirty percent? Thirty percent of the the bottom floor of your FAR can be on the second floor?
Seven and a half.
It's seven and a half percent of your maximum floor area for the site.
Okay, that's right. So it does, it's a def- definite sizable proportion. Um but I I think um everybody's had some really great suggestions, and of course, we'd like that all to be applied to, you know, all the zones and accessory structures.
Good, thank you.
I guess I'll speak too, uh as well. Uh first of all, I got scared, my name's Jude Keerik, uh Pacific Peninsula Architecture. I've been in front of you many a time, most recently with a special structures uh request for a very large contemporary home with a uh you know, a uh like extended sidewall height. Um we were fortunate in that case where we were working with an extremely large lot where we could increase the setbacks so that hopefully the decision was very easy. But uh what I'm here for tonight is just once again to support the process. Uh I know this is gonna be incredibly difficult, and it's it's gonna take place over many a meeting, so I appreciate staff, you know, putting together this package, I appreciate you hearing what we have to say. I I don't know what direction we can go, I mean, I've sat down with Stephanie and shared much very similar ideas that have been discussed here, so I don't really wanna rehash it. But as my uh as a designer, I'm concerned as well about somebody, you know, misusing the rules and the intent. So um you know, for instance, uh the daylight plane is a great idea, but for instance, on the the lot that you just saw on Tuscaloosa, if they set it in so much that they could go up to the full thirty foot height, that wasn't the intent, that they build a thirty foot box. So we discussed a little bit about how having some limitation, whether it's a percentage of the second floor plate that could have, you know, these uh in excess of twenty-two feet height. So I think I'm on board as a designer to have limitations for whatever we do, whether it's a a daylight plane thing or a setback thing. I don't think it needs to be, you know, hundred percent of that seven point five uh percent of the FAR that can go up. So I just want some flexibility to break that twenty-two foot height limit that we're currently wo- working with, other than the four hundred uh square foot tower extension. So um you know, we have a lot of examples, uh right now we're under construction on uh two contemporary homes, and there's been a couple completed, and unfortunately, in in our world, they they tend to start looking alike, and they don't have that variation. So some flexibility would be very much appreciated. And once again, I don't know what's gonna be decided, but I'm all for it, so, okay, thanks.
Yeah, one of those is right, like on the other side of the block for me, that's my, yeah, just, yeah. Guess it probably might every day. Um, okay, anyone else here to speak? Anyone else wanna speak again? Came up with new slides while we were talking? No, alright, good, then I will close the, uh any questions of anyone who spoke? Alright, so I'll close the public hearing and go back to the question for discussion and action. That's appropriate. And this this action would be to continue the discussion to another, there's no action in terms of voting on this tonight, no?
Yeah, if if you have any direction, you know, you're kind of liking one option better than the other, we can always challenge the the fabulous architects we have in the room to, you know, come up with some sketches that can illustrate some of the options, or if you need further research on any of them, you know, we're we're open to some conversation, maybe to narrow it down, that would be fine. I just didn't wanna kind of close it, since we only have three out of the five commissioners here present.
You know, I like, I kind of like the concept of having, uh you know, box and not box designs, you know, you got a criteria, but I also not quite sure if that'll work over time. You know, it seems like it works now, but now we got, we have a thing that is defined as flat roof, and then somebody else come up with a rounded flat roof or something like that, so I'm worried about defining it on architectural design now that we grow out of resistance, saying we're not really a a flat roof and we're not really a gable roof, so what do you call us? But I like the concept of of having two sets of rules relative to this, and the concept, I just wanna even want to make sure we go down, you know, we're not going down a twelve-block dead end, like it looks like it's a freeway, but it ends up being a dead end. Um uh the the other thing is, um I like the idea of percentages, I really appreciated the gable effect, the anything, I thought that was a really, really good way to think about it, and it would be a nice little stepping off point for us, and that might get us away from having two different sets. Um so there could be something like that, and uh if we looked at our current designs that we have out there and looked at the percentages to see where they would fall, um that might be a way to approach it too, just to say, okay, retroactively, if we had to prove this, this one would have been over bulk, over bulked, and this one would have been under bulked or whatever, so we could sort of get a sense of currency. Um and then if anybody else has a, you know, a gabled effect relationship, you know, a regulation that they said, okay, we have gable, why don't we create this? You know, that might be a benchmark, but we'll think it would be fine. I don't know if it is for you, that might have been just creation that you came up with, trying to come up with a solution, but it's a really good thought. Um and the other thing is, I'm not dissable about changing anything on the secondary unit, by the way. Uh I know, I don't I don't mind playing around with the with the main main unit, but I don't mind holding the secondary unit to everybody else. Uh and for two reasons. One, uh one because uh I'm 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 more comfortable with creativity on the on the main main property than I am on the secondary unit. Um and uh secondly, I think that, you know, we gotta tiptoe rather than rather than jumping into it all the way. That's all I, that's all I've got. I I think there is something to this, this window thing is a is a is a factor. I mean, some of these people had their housewarming, guess what? They had a party and everybody's out in the patio making noise, blasting noise all across the neighborhood, which is fine for me, because I felt it was fun, but it's also gonna be something that happens every summer. So so it's it's just one of those, one of those things where the design criteria lifts the noise up off the ground onto the these nice little open areas above the ground uh for everybody to participate. You know, so it's it's a it's a factor in the design that I think is something to consider. That's all I got. Along with whatever light issues we might come up with on that.
Yeah, I like the idea of going back to maybe a small handful of existing structures and superimposing these ideas on top of those to see what they would look like. Um and I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor of two sets of rules.
Yeah, I I'm kind of, yeah, I I back to you.
I just think it could be hard to define originally.
Yeah, right, right, well, that that creates the crack, right? It's like, okay, well, we're right between there, so we don't have to apply a key.
And the opportunity for both of the areas.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree.
Gaming the system.
Yeah. That's something with gable, you know, and the continuation, seems like the seems like the cleanest approach on that. And then also, we can define it, we can demonstrate it that way, we'll just borrow your slides and say, this is what we're thinking about.
Right. Yeah, well, this is needy, it's gonna take a while.
Yeah, right. We'll get the rest of the gr- you know, we got the great lines here, and then we'll we'll fight update that, and we'll continue it. Any any questions to staff on this point? Alright, so do we need a motion to continue this, or is this is this an information I don't see what this doesn't? Uh we got the recommendation providers and staff, why don't we, why don't we take a motion to continue just have study uh and have the staff study it and bring it back for a discussion to a future meeting? Why, why don't we, why don't we take a motion to continue just have study, uh, and have the staff study it and bring it back for a discussion to a future meeting? All right, do we, and we, why don't discuss it immediately?
You do need to, you do need to discuss that too, for certain.
Yeah.
You not actually have to, you've already provided a recommendation to staff.
Okay, do, so we don't need to, it's just, we can just end this discussion and we can come up again, so there's no, okay, that's good, that's good. So we don't need a motion, we don't need, and, and, next discussion. All right, all right, um, all right, so thank you all for coming, Ken, and, uh, don't send Mr. Bull. All right, um, so, uh, thank you, uh, thank you, we're gonna go on to the next item, Commissioner's reports. Anything going on there? I've got two items up on my, uh, and it's more sort of, you know. I, I read, I read, I need to help the K P that said, uh, that the, the new super train thing is gonna come through and they're gonna back combine with what's going to Caltrans, so it's gonna create a, uh, every two and a half minutes, a train's gonna come through here.
So the high speed rail, Caltrans.
High speed rail.
Yeah, yeah, right. So I just wanna make sure somebody is on that somewhere on the planet because we used to have a member on that that used to be here and I don't think we have that member anymore. No, no member on the commanding flight commission is on that commission anymore.
The town still does have a rail committee.
Yes.
Um, and the rail committee is on top of the issues and sends letters and is there a law?
Yeah, there's been, every time there's an opportunity to challenge, whether, like, for example, right now we're challenging the E I R that was done and whether or not it's sufficient, that sort of thing, every time there's an opportunity, we jump on it.
Okay.
It's just called, but obviously Atherton is one of the more active communities.
Yeah, because it was, it's sort of on the hand through every two and a half minutes.
Okay, yeah.
You know, uh, and there's a, there's a house like two, uh, one, one house away from this track right now that's for sale every, every one point five years based on, they have a baby and that's how we gotta move. That's how, that's how, yeah, it's not, that's not terrible. The, the other thing is, um, I don't know, uh, I, I wanted to sort of wrap up the uh, the, the discussion I brought up one time on the, on the marsh road activity. And that worked out extremely well. And we still have a low traffic area through, through Barrows Neighborhood thing. And so I don't see, I don't see any signs, I know it's not Atherton's uh entrance, uh, which is part of the issue, I think. But, uh, well, as long as people don't get used to cutting through the, the neighborhoods again, it was, it's a totally new experience. I mean, you can actually walk down the street and not get hit by five trucks. So it's a, it's a totally, it's, it worked out great. And and I, I don't know what feedback we, we give to the, to the vendor or or the contractor, but they did an outstanding, outstanding job in, in following the intent and the wishes of the community in terms of they had that. So I just want to go on, I understand that. And the staff did a great job, and I know there was a lot of excitement because I went to a couple of meetings and there was exciting meetings. Um, but some of the predictions that, uh, that, you know, the sky would fall, it did not fall. The sky was up the whole time and, uh, and the streets were clear, so I appreciate that.
It's remarkable that they finished on time, these projects are usually.
Well, and they added to it too, they added them, you know, they added the, the, the sui string or something like that through, and they were really good at it, yeah. Anyway, those are the only two items I have. All right, so then we've got uh snap reports.
Thank you, um, I first wanted to introduce our new assistant planner.
Yeah, I was gonna introduce myself, but I was, I was going like, I don't think I met her before, but I, she doesn't act, act like she doesn't know me, so.
Mrs. Dori Guedes, uh, since she's joined us recently, she'll be attending planning commission meetings and.
Oh, boy, you were sort of excited, you're gonna see some of the best trees on the planet.
I'm excited, happy to be here.
All right, good.
Um, and just to follow up from your last meeting, um, there was appointment of Commissioner Tenelli and Commissioner Soffler to help a subcommittee to work with our two folks from our tree committee, uh, myself and Sally Beth or Tom Barbara, so I'm looking at some revisions to the tree ordinance. Uh, so we're trying to figure out meeting logistics and, um, I, I know Commissioner Tenelli's not here tonight, but, uh, we're looking at possibly meeting on the first Tuesday of every month, starting in September. Uh, September sixth, I believe it is. Um, uh, from two to fourth. So I will follow up directly with Commissioner Tenelli. Uh, I know that the two individuals from the tree committee have already confirmed that that time works for them. So we'll just get an affirmation from everybody and then we'll, um, work offline on getting the agendas and, um, the meeting set.
Great. I can say tentatively that, I think that's fine for me and I'll confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
And there's one thing to think about on that is that, uh, since such a high percentage of our agendas are tree things, if there's anything that we could do to make it easier for our staff to be guided by an action without having to come to us? Like, like, for example, lists of trees that they can make a disju- decision on as opposed to these trees. Something like that, like eucalyptus, you know?
Yeah.
And if eucalyptus is yes, palms no, that happens. But a theme.
They're both, they're both in the same category.
You know, the thing, you know, that might be, there might be something there that you would make it easier for you because it was obvious that eucalyptus was not a good tree for that spot, yeah.
It's pretty prevalent in some of the places.
Yeah. Right.
Um, that's, that was that.
All right, well then, I only have item number eight, which always is a real problem to get anybody to move on that. Yeah, you know, if you don't get a jury on this one, we're, we're expected, I'm like, so I need a motion to, right? Move the second and all of the things, aye, aye.